Good evening and welcome to the Hamilton City Council Candidates Forum. I'm Dan Bates. I'm President and CEO of the Greater Hamilton Chamber of Commerce, and we are putting this event on for you along with sponsorships from Journal News and TV Hamilton. So, thank you for joining us. Tonight, we're very excited to offer this to you. We think that as a voter, you should be informed before you go to the polls. So, that's why we are making this available to you. I would just like to remind you that this is for City Council. And the city charter states that the City Council has only two direct employees, the City Manager and Clerk of Council. Section 5.04 of the city charter stipulates that the day-to-day operations of the city, including all employment decisions, are the sole responsibility of the City Manager, and that violation of this provision is caused for immediate forfeiture of elected office. So, the most important role of City Council is strategic planning and policymaking. With that, it gives me great pleasure to introduce Larry Davis, retired from Channel 12. He will be our facilitator tonight, and he will briefly explain how the forum will work. And with that, Larry Davis.
Thanks, Dan. I want to thank the chamber for inviting me to be a part of this event. It's very important. It's very important to the city of Hamilton, to the people of Hamilton, to hear what their candidates have to say. And we have, the whole gang is here. So, I'm going to let you know how this whole thing works. Hunter Dan went over with the candidates as to how things are going to take place here. First off, each candidate will be allowed to give opening remarks. They'll be allowed to, one minute, to introduce themselves, and also tell you why they are suited to be on Hamilton City Council. We're going to have a total of eight questions, correct? Eight questions. And at the very end, we'll have some surprise questions, time allowing. So, in this Halloween season, it could be trick or treat. So, stay tuned. Seven questions, or the questions that you have, the eight, the candidates have in advance. So, they've had time to study, or memorize their answers, write them down, whatever they wanted to do, but we'll hear from them very shortly. There will be a one-minute response to those questions, and then, at the very end, they'll be allowed to give closing remarks, and they'll have 30 seconds to give 30 seconds for those closing remarks. We have a timekeeper, Ms. Laura in the front row there. She'll be keeping the time. And when you see her hold up the paddle, which is blue, that means you have 15 seconds remaining. And the red means stop. And if I remember to look, I'll call it out to stop. So, everybody's ready? We'll get started, okay? We're going to start off with Archie Johnson. Start us off by introducing yourself with your opening remarks, and tell us why you're the man for the job.
All right. Good evening. I'm Archie Johnson. I'm a Hamiltonian, born and raised in Hamilton, in the second ward of our city. I'm a graduate of Hamilton High School, the class of 1981. I'm a graduate of Miami Hamilton. My first real job was at Beckett Paper Company here in downtown Hamilton. And I still live in the second ward to this day, and I'm married to Tommy Johnson. I'm here tonight because I want you to vote for me for Hamilton City Council.
Very good. Susan?
Thank you. Is that close enough? Thank you all for being here tonight. I think that one of the most important things that we all do in our life is make an investment in our home. And our home is not the physical structure that we live in. It's the city we live in. And I believe that most of you are probably here tonight because you live in this city, and you care about this city. Many of you work, play, have gone to school here, raised a family as I have, born and raised here, and it's important to me. I know it's important to you, and that's why I'm running for City Council. There are many things that influence decisions regarding where we make our home, and I think we'll talk about many of those things tonight. I'm assuming you're here because you care about what happens in this town. Again, I was born in Hamilton, raised majority of my life, living in the city. And I went to school at Ross High School, having gone elementary in the city, but the majority of my time, again, living here. My husband and I are raising our children here, and have chosen to live here in my retirement. Thank you.
Right on time. All right, Danny Ivers.
Hi, everyone. I'm Danny Ivers. I would first like to start off by thanking Larry Davis for moderating, TV Hamilton, for filming and distributing this forum, and the Hamilton Chamber of Commerce for hosting. And of course, all the citizens here for, you know, coming out, engaging, and looking into the candidates for the city. Again, my name is Danny Ivers. My candidacy has been endorsed by Sheriff Jones and Sarah Kurthers, because they agree with my vision. I'm running because Hamilton needs young representation. People around my age are the future of our city, and why would you not want the future of the city to be involved in the decision-making process for the future of the city?
Hi, everybody. My name's Eric Pullman, and I'm running for City Council. Wanted to start off by saying, give you a little bit of my history. First of all, I am married, my lovely wife here, Tanya, for 33 years. I have two children, Erica and Evan, and now I've got two grandchildren. And I did say two grandchildren, twins back in May, so I've got some five months old. Very proud of them. I'm a 1981 graduate of Baden High School and DeRusselley Joint Vocational School. In 1996, I started my own business, which was Eric's Auto Service on Millville Avenue, and I owned and operated that until 2018. 2018, I sold the business to my nephew, Ryan, and he's kept it in the family. And that's a third-generation Pullman business in Hamilton since 1963. So, thank you. Got through that, okay.
Okay, Carla Fear.
Hello to all in attendance and to those watching on TV Hamilton. First, I'd like to thank the Greater Hamilton Chamber of Commerce, Miami Hamilton Downtown, TV Hamilton, and the Journal News for giving us this opportunity. My name is Carla Fear. I was elected to City Council in 2008. My priority has always been to give the most service I can to all Hamiltonians, and I believe that my skills, knowledge, and experience can continue to promote Hamilton. I'm running for reelection to the city because I have respect for our past and all those who helped make Hamilton a great community, but mostly, I want to be sure that we keep heading in the right direction. Thank you.
I'm Matt Von Stein. I was born in '77 at Ford Hamilton. I graduated from Baden in '96. I graduated from the IBW Apprenticeship in 2002, and Xavier University in 2011. I'm a third-generation IBW Union Electrician. My grandpa, on my mom's side, was a maintenance electrician at Champion before went to work at Mosler. My parents met at Sip's Donuts in Lindenwald, which no longer exists. They got married and opened Von Stein's place and ran that place from '77 to 1990. I currently reside on the West Side with my wife and three stepsons, and I'd appreciate your vote on November 5th. Thank you.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen, and my name is Jason Snyder. I am a father of three beautiful girls. My wife and I came to Hamilton 12 years ago with a company that started working on the mercantile lofts just across the street here. Three short years after that, my wife and I decided that we wanted to make Hamilton our home, and we moved into one of your beautiful historic districts, started a business, Tam's Construction, and also are the ones who founded and started Operation Pumpkin that's taking place this weekend. Two years ago, we were named Citizens of the Year for our efforts, and we feel, and I feel, that this is the next logical step for me to continue to serve the city of Hamilton. Look forward to your vote. Thank you.
My name's Casey Hume. I was born and raised here, went to school all the way through. I left for a few years with being married and military service. Back in 2007, me and my wife moved back. We're raising our children here. I've done a lot of volunteer work over the years, been committed to helping within the communities, and I want to continue that by taking it to another level and helping the city as a whole. So, I really do appreciate your vote come November. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, candidates. So, there's your introductions and giving you reasons why they think they should be on Hamilton City Council. Now, again, there are eight questions that I will ask, and they all have received these in advance, so they've had time to study up on these and prepare their answers, whether they write them down or they memorize them. It's totally up to them. So, let's get started. First question, please describe your previous board experience and what you bring to the strategic planning and policymaking process. A board meaning, it could be, you know, maybe you've been on a school board, or 4H, or any kind of body where you would be on a similar situation, decision-making. So, Archie, since you went first, and then introductions, we're going to skip to Susan, and you're going to lead us off.
All right. Thank you very much. So, as has been stated, City Council's primary role is strategic planning and policymaking. My experience is much broader than board service. I bring experience and leadership from my time at Miami University. Having been a graduate and undergraduate and graduate of Miami, I worked 32 years in administration. 25 of those years, I was the Director of the Office of Ethics and Conflict Resolution, recently retiring from there. My primary responsibility and my position was collaborating on policy development and policy implementation as it relates to public safety, housing, quality of life on campus and in the community. I was a member of the Miami 2020 Long Range Planning Committee for several years. That involved campus development. Appointed to University Senate and served 10 years, where we also made decisions on university-wide legislation. Partnered with Miami Administration, faculty, Oxford City leaders on citywide strategic planning, and I believe my experience will benefit City Council.
Okay. Thank you, Susan, very much. Danny Ivers.
I have had previous board experience, although it's currently only my third year in a leadership role. I previously served on the Board for Hamilton High School Show Choirs as Publicity Chair for the past two years, and currently their Vice President. However, being a board member is not required to be an elected official. I stay directly informed and study the city's issues by attending organized neighborhood meetings and every single City Council meeting. So, when elected, I would bring that obtained knowledge, tie it in with my perspective, to the table.
Good. Eric?
Okay, I think the hardest board I was on was owning my business for 22 years. I was the President of the Butler County Challenger Baseball, a National League organization for special-needs children. I was the President of that league for 12 years. I was the, I was on the Board of Advisors for the Hamilton High Automotive Repair Vocational Program. Currently, on the Board of Zoning Appeals for the city of Hamilton. And by implementing policies and procedures, budgeting, smart financial management in my business and in the baseball league, they both became successful and still are today. My experience in business, financial management, and community involvement will benefit the city.
Thank you very much. Okay, Carla?
Thank you. I've had the privilege to serve on several outstanding boards. And during my term on the YWCA Board of Directors, Vision 2020, and Baden High School Advisory Board, we did do a strategic plan. So, when the discussion came up for the city of Hamilton that it was time to do one, I understood it, and I understood the value of coming up with mutual goals, where everyone is together, sharing ideas, and it's a unified way to be able to give us a direction that we're going to head in. I think that our strategic plan is why we have the success that we do. Thank you.
Thank you.
I've been on City Council for four years. I've been on the Public Utilities Commission for two years, Government Affairs Committee for two years. I've been an IBW Local 648 President for 12 years. I've been Head of Membership Development for seven years. I'm on our Pinching Committee. And that all comes, you know, that all helps with being on City Council. With being on council for the past four years, we've been making policy in a manner that see, that's best for all of us and not just for one little neighborhood or section of Hamilton. And while every person may not agree with what the decisions City Council makes, or I make, I believe we're all making these decisions for the betterment of Hamilton, whether it be new sidewalks, splash pads, the Door District, infrastructure parks, or trying to bring a neighborhood back to life.
Okay, thank you. Jason?
Well, since coming to Hamilton just 12 years ago, I've been on the City of Sculpture Board for four years, ICE Fest for four years, the founder, again, of Operation Pumpkin, which this will be our eighth year. And I've also been a coach at the West Side Little League for the softball team now for the last two years. My involvement within all of those committees, and then also owning our business now for seven years, continues to bring a number of people together. The event, you know, for instance, this weekend, we generate roughly around 40,000 people from a number of neighborhoods, a number of different cities, counties. Just this last year, we had 27 different states represented here in Hamilton, Ohio. And I feel being on City Council would help propel the downtown and the entire city to another level. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, Casey?
I spent four years on the Board of a youth athletic organization, two on the Board, and then two as the President of the league, dealing with the finances, budgeting, and overall planning and operations of the organization. Then, for the last seven years of my military career, I was on the Board of the Family Readiness Group for the support company, the 216th Combat Engineering Unit. We dealt with preparing and family readiness, soldier readiness, dealing with all matters of problems, issues, and concerns, addressing those, developing solutions, and then formulating a plan to send to the proper level of chain of command. Luckily, by being a soldier liaison, I was able to not just help create the plan, but fulfill the plan also. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Archie, you're last.
Thank you. Well, I guess my first word would be experience. I've served on City Council two separate terms. I've served as, on the Board, and as the President of the Hamilton Fairfield Westchester NAACP. I've served on the Board of OKI, which is the Ohio-Kentucky-Indiana Regional Council of Governments. I've served on the Board of SELF. I've served on the Butler County Judicial Council. I've served in the community for the Second and Fourth Ward Community Council, and I've also chaired those meetings. Over the last 24 years of my life, I have passed at various churches, and so I think I bring experience and team-building skills to council.
Very good. Thank you very much. Okay, question number two, very short. What is the number-one priority for your term on Hamilton City Council? Danny Ivers, you're going to lead us off on this one.
Okay. My top priority will be making sure the citizens are heard. Their voices matter, and many have never attended a City Council meeting, some due to work or other occurrences. We need to adapt to the times and communicate with our citizens, utilizing whatever their preferred method of contact may be. We need to hear and gather their opinions when there is an incident that provokes apprehension, or when there's an issue that's decisive to City Council. So, my first action will be to assure the citizens are heard, because those who are elected work for the citizens.
Okay. Is that the timer going off? Timekeeper? Okay, Eric?
You can take that from me.
You're okay. You're fine. My primary focus is to collaborate with the fellow council members and the City Manager to implement the steps necessary to create a shared vision of the city. We're at, I feel we're at the crossroads right now to greatness, and we must move forward and continue our course to, our goals, or basically our plan. Having the right people, making the right decision is crucial to the future of City of Hamilton. That's all right. She didn't hear me. But, yeah, so, is critical, is crucial to the future of our success. So, thank you.
Okay, thank you. Carla?
I believe there's two pressing issues that go hand in hand, strengthening our neighborhoods and the overall appearance of our city. The neighborhoods, our neighborhoods, are the cornerstone of our community, and the 17 Strong initiative was designed to help strengthen these neighborhoods to make them more stable, safe, and productive. By reducing blight and cleaning up things up, we reduce crime, we create a clean, safe environment, thus improving the quality of life for our community to make it more attractive. We must bring about the change through enforcements of ordinances as to the maintenance of buildings, littering, and any issue that impedes the overall appearance of our city.
Okay, thank you. Matt?
I believe the number-one goal, or my number-one goal, is economic development in Hamilton. We have to maintain our focus on bringing new business in and helping approve the businesses that are already established. Hamilton was at its best when we had good-paying jobs with benefits, good blue-collar jobs, Champion, Beckett, Ohio Casualty, Mosler, Devoe. They're gone, and with them, all the jobs left. Now, we're getting new companies in and have older companies that are expanding, like the Hamilton Castor and Thesen Cup, Thesen Crup. And we also have 80 Acres, ODW Logistics, Barclay Car, and Spukinook that's going to help. These are companies that are going to take Hamilton to the future and help us rebuild what was, what was and still is a great city. These are the companies that are going to reshape Hamilton in its future.
Okay, thank you. Jason?
While I agree with the majority of the candidates' answers, I think the primary focus to enforce a lot of these ideas that they have needs to start with reinforcing our streets, our policing, our fire. And I feel we need to be reinvesting back in ourselves, which has kind of been lost for the last 10 years. So, my focus would be to ensure that the correct dollars are being put towards police, fire, and infrastructure, to ensure that we've got the proper amount of personnel and the infrastructure moving forward.
Very good. Thank you. Casey?
Actually, he pretty much said exactly what I was going to. I think our priority needs to be priorities. It's great to invest in the future and look towards the future. We all do it. But you've got to take care of your needs that are right in front of you first, and that is public safety, and that is infrastructure. Our roads are crumbling. Well, it's a lot easier to get a business to come in with a good roadway. I'm sure if you called Amazon, or Serta, or any of those other companies, and asked them where they'd rather go, a place with nice roads, or a place that was almost gravel roads, I'm pretty sure the answer would be clear. We need to put those priorities first, taking care of the citizens that would also help take care of bringing in more economic development. Thank you.
Very good. Thank you. Archie?
Thank you. My number-one priority is to develop relationships with our citizens and to bring about a different level of transparency as it relates to our City Council. I want to restore any hope that may have been lost along the way as it relates to our City Council, and to provide a voice for those who feel like they have no voice. While many people in our city have been energized, there's still a sector of people who feel like they've been left behind. And so, I want to be the person to reconnect them to our city.
Very good. Archie, thank you very much. Susan?
Thank you. As a direct representative of the city, of the citizens of Hamilton, my number-one priority would be to actively engage with the residents in our communities. I'll do this through committee work, volunteer service, working collaboratively with city leaders, other members of City Council, on strategic goals for the city, and be accountable to the residents. This will be my full-time job. I will continue to actively engage with 17 Strong and other community groups that are working to improve our neighborhoods, focus on public safety and quality of life for our residents. I've regularly attended City Council meetings for two years. I want to better understand the economic development plans for the city and the impact these plans will have immediately and in the future. I will be fiscally responsible in considering expenditure of funds for this city. Thank you.
Okay, two questions down. So, let's go on to number three. What are the best things Hamilton has to offer? And how would you, leadership, how would your leadership involvement, I guess I better put my glasses on. What are the best things that Hamilton has to offer, and how would your leadership involvement capitalize on those features or resources in the future? Eric, you're up first.
I kind of figured that out. That's a good pattern. I think our diverse culture, small-town atmosphere, city architect, or affordable housing are some of the few things that draw people to our city. You know, there's numerous things, too. Our rapid growth has helped expand our community, our community, our businesses, and our family engagement for the better. You look back at Hamilton five years ago, you know, it's definitely a big change of what has been happening around this town. I think what I, my leadership, I think my proven experience and success in business and the programs I've managed show that I will work hard, and I will do whatever it takes to make Hamilton a better community.
Very good. Okay, Carla?
Hamilton has several tangible amenities that set us apart. We own our own utilities, which includes fiber and vast technology potential. We have a downtown that is becoming a hub of activity for business and entertainment, and six separate business districts with the opportunity for any new startup. And with the completion of South Hamilton Crossing, we have an additional 60 acres of land for prime development. But I think one of the best things that Hamilton has to offer as a place to locate and grow a business is our city administration staff and every department that comes together to work as a team. At a time when most municipalities were struggling with the reduction of state funds, we use that as an opportunity to develop new ideas and incentives to spur economic development. The city of Hamilton has sent a clear message that we are open for business every day, every way.
Okay, Carla, thanks. Matt?
Thanks. I want, the energy, the energy that's in Hamilton right now was not here 10 years ago. Downtown, there was nothing going on, and now Main Street, nothing was going on. In the past three years, 30 businesses have opened up shop in the Main Street District. That's not counting what's going on here with Basil's, Second Street Tap, Brew Works, the Markham Apartments, all the other things. And how my leadership can help is how everybody else can help, and that's to shop local. That is one of the most important things for Hamilton to do right now, is to shop local. For every $100 you spend, $68 stays in this community. And that's money that we can use to fix sidewalks, hire more firefighters and police officers, fix the streets, and improve our, our parks. Thank you.
Okay, Jason?
When I came to town 12 years ago, I had been in numerous cities, and my job was basically to go in and revitalize a building and put a spark into the town. And when I came here, I struggled to understand why Hamilton needed that spark. You have a beautiful, we have a beautiful historic downtown, have the great Miami River running right through the center of it, and I feel we need to continue to capitalize that and become a destination. Like Matt said, and Carla mentioned, the number of businesses that have popped up here continue to make Hamilton a destination, and I would work hard to continue that, that effort.
Okay. Casey?
Right now, I'd have to say it's possibilities. I mean, with the economic growth and the energy that's going on in the city and the movement that we are going through, the possibilities for our town are endless. I want to capitalize on that. I want to keep working towards the same goals of moving us forward. We have got a lot of property that's available for more businesses to move in, which will be, help more with our economic growth. I would like to see more businesses that weren't just customer-service-based. I would really like to see more technology-based jobs, more skilled labor, light manufacturing, something that would appeal to all the citizens here in the Hamilton area. This way, they can actually truly work here in Hamilton, since many of us do not. Thank you.
Okay, Casey. Archie?
Thank you. Well, let me first say that I believe, and I have always believed, that our greatest resource and asset in the city of Hamilton is our citizens. For without them, nothing that we do or put into place really matters, because you have to have a buy-in on the part of the citizens. Not only that, I've heard someone say a long time ago, "You can call yourself a leader. You can think that you're a leader, but unless the people follow your leadership, you're just taking a long walk." So, I come back and I say this to you, that I believe in order for us to grow together, somebody has to be willing to develop and build those relationships to the point that our citizens will have a buy-in into our city's vision, and not only that, that it might be clear and that it might be inclusive.
Thank you. Susan?
Thank you. I believe that Hamilton always has had a lot to offer, but in the past seven or eight years, certainly, we've seen a lot of revitalization going on, and we now have even more to offer. years, certainly we've seen a lot of revitalization going on and we now have even more to offer. Hamilton's best features, I believe, are our historic districts, the river, recreation areas, the unique communities and the opportunities for business and economic growth and of course, our water. I'd be remiss if I didn't mention early manufacturing, that's part of our history. And literally, it's the foundation of new developments like Spooky Nook. I support development on the river and use of the river as a recreation area. The great Miami River is an asset that has been underutilized. The river has been an east-side, west-side dividing line and it's my hope that this will diminish as both sides of the river begin to develop. Thank you.
Thank you. Danny Ivors?
Thank you. You know, the most unique thing is probably this, as Susan mentioned, our water, the world's best tasting tap. But you know, along with that, a riverfront is also very unique. We have a concert venue, a park and many small businesses right by the river that link together to host for your events very frequently. That brings people together and gets them involved in our community. I believe I've already capitalized on that aspect of it by getting people to participate in such events and will continue to do so when elected.
Okay, very good. Three questions down. Our fourth question is, what are the biggest and most immediate challenges facing the city of Hamilton? Carla Feer, you're up.
Connecting with residents, that's our biggest challenge, always has been. Everybody thinks the city's supposed to come in and do things for them, come in and make neighborhoods better, but unless these citizens want to be involved, want to be helped, want to have knowledge of what's going on, it's not going to work. So, excuse me, I'm going to read something in case anybody wants to take notes. Transparency is paramount importance for the city. The following has been implemented to encourage citizens to become more aware and familiar with the workings of the city government. These are things that you can all find online. If you don't have access to a computer, you can go to the lame public library. Legislation. Full council agendas with staff reports and supporting documents are available the Friday before every council meeting, which is the second, fourth Wednesdays of each month. This is a, this is a city council that they review. In finance, we have Open Gov, Budget Book, the PAFR, which is a, which is a public friendly summary of annual finances and a complete summary of annual finances, all that we have won certificates of excellency from, from the Government Finance Office Association the last three years.
Okay, thank you very much. Matt Von Stein?
I want to say jobs again. We need more good paying jobs. We need to have more businesses coming to Hamilton, paying a livable wage with benefits. With more jobs comes more payroll, with more payroll comes more revenue, with more revenue comes more options for the city of Hamilton to use for, like I said before, streets and sidewalks, fixed planted properties and help encourage homeownership. I know a lot of people here and you'll see it in the journal and everything, a lot of people think the biggest problem in Hamilton is homelessness. And it is a big problem. But I'll be honest with you, I don't know how to, I don't know how to do that right now, I don't know how to fix that problem. San Diego spent 150 million, San Francisco, or, San Francisco spent 150 million, San Diego spent 120 million and Los Angeles spent 1.2 billion dollars in two years to try to fix homelessness with little results. Hamilton can't do that. So we have to get with our local agencies and see what we can come up with together.
Okay, thank you. Jason?
I think some of the biggest issues facing the city currently are the homelessness and the, and the livable wage jobs. But at the same time, to combat or combat some of this, we need to, again, reinforce the police and fire to make sure they're directing the homeless and the addicts to the correct and proper resources and facilities. And again, along with our infrastructure, similar issues. Without the proper infrastructure, it deters business from wanting to come to the city. If you can't get in, you can't get out. It's all about effectiveness and efficiency and being efficient. Being a business owner, I deal with it every day. And if you can't efficiently come in and out of the city, it's not an attraction.
Okay, thank you. Casey here.
I think one of the biggest challenges we have right now is public safety as a whole and I include infrastructure in that. After all, poor road conditions can cause more accidents and injuries. The homeless issue, lack of fire and police officers, that's an issue. Right now, the homeless is an issue all the way across this country. You can't just keep throwing money at it, it's not going to solve the problem. But there are issues and ways that we can do that. I've been in contact with the Veterans Community Project out west in Kansas City. It'd be a few years before they could even come out here to even examine, to see what they could do to help on that aspect. And they build tiny homes for the homeless and work on that aspect. But part of the issue is with the city of Hamilton, our building and zoning is highly over-regulated and we need to make changes to that. Right? That program would not function right now because a 300 square foot home would have to sit on a 1,500 square lot with one and a half car parking. Completely defeats the purpose. We need to make those changes to try to help the situation.
Thank you very much. Archie Johnson?
Thank you, sir. I believe the greatest challenge facing our city is our inability to finance the needs of our citizens. We need program opportunities for our young people as it relates to our teenage population and their self-development. We need to be able to curtail a lot of the street violence that's taking place. I believe it's equally important for our leaders to reevaluate the city's budget as it relates to our infrastructure and our streets. What we have before us is not a new problem, these are old problems, old issues. And we cannot balance the budgets on the backs of our people. More taxation is not the issue. What we need to do is reevaluate our budget, take a second look at what we're doing and determine how we're going to get there without harming our citizens financially.
Thank you, sir. Susan?
Thank you. Hamilton, like many other cities in the state of Ohio, has lost millions of tax dollars that have been withheld by the state. Tens of millions of dollars have been lost. We've also lost tax dollars by the loss of businesses, as already been alluded to, with the loss of major manufacturing such as Beckett, Smart Paper, Champion, I mean, name the businesses, Ohio Casualty that's been lost. And the corporate dollars, the jobs, the tax money is gone. It's going to take some strategic and creative planning and budgeting on the part of the city to meet the needs. We have lost funding for our police, yes, and for our firefighters, roads, education, just to name a few. However, our city manager, Joshua Smith, recently reported that the future looks extremely bright. With the new businesses coming in, we're going to see a surplus, money coming back into the city. When I ask residents about the challenges they're facing, it does include the things that have been mentioned.
Okay, Susan, your time is up. Sorry.
I would say the current state of our infrastructure and economic development is the biggest issue that Hamilton has at the moment. While focusing on the future is a must, we need to focus on what we have now so there can be a successful future for our city. Better streets bring businesses, businesses create jobs, jobs bring more money back into the general fund, which gives us the opportunity to give a, you know, a potential pay increase to police and fire, thus offering competitive pay compared to other local safety departments and/or the streets. So we need to focus on the current state of our economic development and infrastructure.
Okay, Eric?
Well, you notice most of my answers have been pretty quick and short, this one's not going to be, so I'll probably run out of time. But I, the last couple of months, I've, I've gone out and talked to a lot of people and I agree with everything that you guys were talking about, but I think the number one problem that everybody comes up to me about is the, is the drug problem. We do have a serious problem with drugs, but you know, few cities in America are immune from it, you know, so police council, police, fire, you know, fire can't, they cannot solve this problem by theirself. I agree with Carla. You, you know, citizens have to get involved. We have to take back our neighborhoods. This right here, the drug problem is, is actually hindering our efforts to build our neighborhoods, to build our neighborhoods as our plans, get them back, revitalize them. We need to take back Hamilton is what we really need to do. We need to fight this problem head-on and do everything we can. And if I get on council, I will listen to any reasonable effort to do this for spending money or any program that we need to do to battle this problem.
Question number five, Hamilton is rich in diversity. How should that be embraced for a strategic planning and economic development? Matt Von Stein, you're up.
Thank you. Diversity can be a lot of things, race, religion, physical ability, age, ethnicity. And I think the city administration is currently looking at all this and addressing it for strategic planning and economic development. We have the Diversity and Inclusion Committee, Linden Walt has protocol, there's Seventeen Strong, they have the Southeast Civic Association. And all these companies, you know, they talk to the city leaders, city administration and feed them ideas and information and we take that information and we try to make plans that best suit those ideas. We have the Markham Apartments in Markham Park, go to Concert Rivers Edge, that's pretty diverse. Brew Works in Hamilton Joe is another diverse crowd. The city's not planning for a white male that's 42-years-old with gray hair, it's kind of chubby. I mean, they're not planning for Matt Von Stein, they're planning for everybody in Hamilton, so, thank you.
Thank you. Okay, Jason?
Very good, Matt.
That goes for me too. Big time.
This is a tough question, this is one that I've wrestled with since we received the questions. Hamilton is very diverse in a number of aspects. I do feel strongly though that we struggle to include all walks. For instance, look at the people sitting up here tonight. I don't think we're very diverse whatsoever when it comes to leadership. And it, I agree, we need to get out there and make connections with all 17 of our communities and encourage them to get involved, be it a festival, be it being, becoming part of the community or a committee. But we need to do a better job at reaching out to all 17 of those communities and, and all the diverse people that live in them.
Thank you. Casey?
We are very diverse, that is very clear. One of the biggest diversities that we have in Hamilton is age. And that's where we are really lacking when it comes to activities that include everyone with that group. The under 21 crowd right now doesn't have much to do in Hamilton, depending on the time of year. I mean, in the summer, if you're under the age of 10-years-old, you can go to the splash pads, but I don't know very many 16-year-olds that want to go run through a sprinkler. But we need to look at more inclusive programs and activities. One thing that I would like to see happen with the city of Hamilton is a youth athletic organization or activities league that would be ran with the police and fire departments' help to build community relations, give activities and engage the youth. And then on top of that, it would also add positive role models for them. And I think that would help with a lot of other issues within the city also.
Okay. Thank you very much. Archie?
Thank you again.
You're welcome.
I agree, Hamilton is rich in diversity. And we should celebrate it all, it all, in all levels. I believe that Seventeen Strong is a good segue for community development. I do not believe that we have the necessary overall support of our citizens in order to be successful. However, I do believe that we have an even greater issue or challenge when it comes to diversity in our city. We have a Diversity and Inclusion Commission, which is by ordinance and they have not met in months, which means that we are not getting the information that we need to promote our city and to promote our workforce because if our leaders are not meeting and the people that are supposed to give us the information is not meeting, then the job will never be done.
Okay. Thank you. Susan?
I think appreciating the diversity within our Seventeen Strong neighborhoods is the place to start. I regularly attend the community meetings and I immediately recognize what I'll call the unique personality of each of those neighborhoods. It distinguishes each of them from the other. Many of the neighborhood groups have self-identified their needs and have worked with the city to encourage economic development and land use development. We've seen an increase in parks and playgrounds in neighborhoods where families and children are. I previously mentioned my number one priority as a council member is to actively engage with all communities and become familiar with their needs. Yes, I've lived here all my life, but the Linden Walt, where I hung out with my cousin, went to Linden Lanes, is no longer the same. So we have to pay attention to what the needs are of our neighborhoods and address that as a priority.
Okay, thank you. Danny?
Thanks. Hamilton is indeed a very diverse city. We have 17 established neighborhoods from all walks of life being made up from different socioeconomic statuses and backgrounds. Because of the companies coming into Hamilton, everybody gets to start at something new. Hamilton Enterprise Park has industrial and manufacturer companies right here in our city. Just because we don't see it often in our prominent locations doesn't mean it's not happening. They're all even hiring and expanding. For example, Dorina Hybrid moved from Memphis, Tennessee to Hamilton this year. They relocated to an old vacant building in Linden Walt, the SOS building on Bell Avenue. The city is now getting thousands of utility dollars each month, generating money into the general fund while ultimately creating jobs for Hamiltonians from all walks of life.
Okay, Eric?
Sir? Diverse societies can harness the talents of different groups of people to make for a more robust and resilient economy. Cities with diverse populations and ethnic enclaves are sought after by tourists to enjoy the aesthetics of the architecture and other cultural attractions. Again, I sound like a broken record here on here, but we, council does need to work with these neighborhood programs to make all this happen. A lot of people go to different cities to go into the different type of neighborhoods that the cities have to offer. And we do have to have, to get our neighborhoods back to be part of the plan to revive these neighborhoods, we do have to have citizens. Citizens have to get involved. You can't fix it on Facebook, okay? Facebook is not a fix. We, you have to get out, you have to look around your, your neighborhood, you have to go to your meetings and, and I think anybody in council would support these groups that organize to get their neighborhoods back.
Okay. Eric, thank you. Carla?
Well, it sounds like we're eight for eight that the neighborhoods are the most important thing as far as our diversity goes. And I don't think I realized how diverse it was till a couple of months ago Seventeen Strong had organized a bus tour of the city. And we spent about five hours touring parts of Hamilton I'd never been to. And realizing all the different little, little corner grocery stores that are still there and being able to see neighborhoods and see kids out playing, you get used to your own environment and you don't see it. So as far as a strategic plan though, the city cannot and should not be the one that's putting this together to create it for each neighborhood. The people that live in these neighborhoods need to step forward and take ownership and be a very active participant in it. Us having strong neighborhoods could be the best economic development tool the city could have.
Okay. We move on now to question number six. What is your view on major development projects like Spooky Nook at Champion Mill, the Markham, downtown residential projects and others, and how will Hamilton change as a result of those projects? I believe it's Jason's turn to start us off.
Thank you. I'm in full support of every one of those projects that you mentioned for the simple fact that, again, it creates, it makes Hamilton a destination. I come from Canton, Ohio. There's a small part of Canton that has a place called Belden Village and there are 127 restaurants and bars within a four-mile radius. And it's a destination. The more things there are there, it draws, attracts more people. Hamilton's the same way. You know, we started with Ryan's and then Basil's and they struggled for the simple fact that they were the only ones. So, and when it comes to these types of projects, the more the merrier. I'm in full support of it and, thank you.
Okay. Casey?
I also am in full support of. You can see the good that it's done for our city so far. Economy is moving up, more businesses are coming in between all the different things that are on that list. And with Spooky Nook, I mean, how can anybody be against that coming in here? I mean, if you look, looking at what it's done so far and what it's going to do, and then if you look at it from another perspective completely, with the money that the city has invested into it, that's almost like betting a large sum of money on your favorite team and then hoping that they lose. It wouldn't, doesn't make sense. So I'm, like I said, I've been completely for it from the get-go. It's going- It's going to really change our area, and it's going to keep going.
Okay. Archie?
Thank you again.
You're welcome.
Well, we all know that Spooky Nook is probably one of the largest projects that we're ever going to see in the city of Hamilton. And we're hopeful that it's going to play out to our advantage and that we will reap the benefits because we are in Hamilton and Spooky Nook is halfway done. The other thing is, the Markham has added to our entertainment district, and I'm excited about what is to come. But the Markham is just one phase of what has happened there. There have been plenty of other people who have invested in us over there, and that's what's made it great. But I'm glad to see a lot of what's taking place because a lot of it was already, the fruits that you're seeing now is when I served on council, the East High Corridor, the Entertainment District, all of these things, the Rivers Edge Amphitheater. I was there when those things started, and so I'm excited to see them play out.
Okay. Susan?
Thanks. I too totally support the major developments that are happening in Hamilton. I'm always someone who is looking at things with a glass half-full. But I have to say, I had some doubt, like, who's going to live in downtown Hamilton? Who's going to live in the lofts and the Markham? Well, I know now, anyone and everyone lives downtown. I frequently hear people say, where did everyone go before we had the restaurants and the hotels and things downtown? Where did they all go? They're coming from out of town, they're visitors that are now here. I was in Drew S. next door this week having coffee, and I saw a group of what I'll call twenty-something, they were very young professionals, all walking down the street going to lunch. And I looked at them, and I thought, this is the future of Hamilton. These are the people who are now living downtown, working downtown, and they're going to make it their home, and we have to continue to encourage that. Thank you.
Okay. Danny?
I as well am in complete favor of Hamilton's recent development projects, such as Spooky Nook at Champion Mill, which is soon to be the largest indoor sports facility in the entire country. I'm a huge supporter of our city's small businesses, and an immensely positive thing about Spooky Nook is that it will, you know, be greatly beneficial to the area's local shops and restaurants. The facility is also estimated to employ one hundred full-time workers and three hundred sixty-five part-time positions. With that being said, I completely stand by the recent development projects in Hamilton.
Thank you. Eric?
I love this question because I didn't have to write down anything. It's great. Because like everybody says, how can you not like it? It's just Hamilton, when we, you know, you go downtown now, and we go to the flea, we just, on a Tuesday night, you used to come down to Hamilton, there was nothing, and we could go out to eat, and there's people walking around. It's exciting to see this again. I love that I don't even have to leave my town to, you know, I can eat here now, and I can go down and listen to music, we can do anything that we want here. And I can't wait till the next five years what it's going to look like. Spooky Nook, I think it's going to be a big project. Everybody's worried about the traffic and the parking and all that stuff, but we're going to have twenty thousand people here coming into Hamilton every month. What a great problem to try to figure out, you know? It's, it's going to be tough, everybody knows that. But what a great, to have that many people come into this town that was once considered a ghost town is awesome. So I'm excited about it.
Good. All right. Carla?
My view is, this is great, keep them coming. Projects don't just happen, there has to be a demand for them. And because of our strategic plan, Hamilton is in high demand right now. And the other unique thing is that with all the people and all businesses that have come from outside of Hamilton, they get the sense of how special Hamilton is and their residents. They feel like they are co-owners. They like being in Hamilton. And we are creating a very hospitable environment now where people do want to come and live, work, and play.
Okay. Matt?
Now, I want to keep going with that, and I'm for Spooky Nook and everything else. And the one thing that's flying under the radar that not many people are talking about is Eighty Acres. That's a very exciting company that's moving to Hamilton, that's going to be Hamilton's largest utility user. And then you've got Markham Apartment, what's going on at Third and Dayton. You've got the students from Miami University living there, you've got over two hundred people living at the Markham Apartment. That's a lot more foot traffic in downtown Hamilton, and we need that. As for the Spooky Nook, I know what the complaint is, and it's traffic. And that traffic's going to be addressed. And you know when we else, we had traffic is when Champion was up, Beckett Paper was up, Mercy Hospital was down here, and Ohio Casualty. That traffic problem will get solved, I promise you that. But here's some numbers for the Spooky Nook, provided from Chamber of Commerce. Ninety-nine million dollar economic impact, fourteen hundred jobs, labor income impact of thirty-two million, a tax impact of fifteen million, seven million, which would be counting city. That is a lot of extra money to spend on our local neighborhoods.
Okay. Very good. We move now to question number seven. Looking at the priorities identified in Plan Hamilton, which categories, ideas should receive the largest percentage of city funding resources? Casey Hume, you're first.
I think that's going to be a given with the mobility part of the plan. With Spooky Nook coming, with everything else that's going on, majority of our funds should be going to our roads, to our infrastructure, especially with us turning around and having a levy on the ballot. If we're going to try to have the citizens pay for majority of that, we need to turn around and do our part by investing in it with the money from the plan, cutting expenses wherever we can, finding other ways to create the funds for that. I understand Spooky Nook is going to generate quite a bit of money when it comes to the taxes. I would be in favor of a tourist tax, an additional sales tax at Spooky Nook and at hotels, similar to what they did up in Liberty Way, with that money being channeled into the streets, emergency services, and in some community programs.
Okay. Thank you very much. Archie?
I believe in developing any relationship, it must be done from the inside out. Because what you see on the outside may be deceiving. We have to take a good look at our inner core and of our city and build upon it. I've said it once, and I'll say it again, our citizens are our greatest resource. We have to be a people-first kind of government. I believe that our citizens deserve better, and they need to know that they matter. What they see on the daily in a lot of our communities is not where some of us live. And so we have to realize that when we're in leadership. But when you're blinded by the circumstances, it's easy to ignore the real pain of some of our communities. And so we must learn to develop relationships and build partnerships with hospitals and our business partners as they come into our city and ask them to help us address the homelessness, help us to address the drug use and drug distribution in our communities.
Okay. Archie, time's up, sorry. Susan?
Thank you. I'm very intrigued with Plan Hamilton, and if you don't know what it is, you really should look it up. It's a citizen-community-driven plan to guide the development of Hamilton for the next fifteen years. It's fluid, it changes based on the priorities and what our community members want. The document is about what you want and what Hamilton can do for you. I believe priorities should be given to enhancing the well-being of the residents and the neighborhoods. This is your chance. I've alluded to this several times because I think it is important. The recently adopted, and recently I mean yesterday in City Council, the recently adopted strategy developed by Miami University students for Second Ward warrants immediate attention, funding, and resources. Growing businesses and jobs is my second priority because this also enhances the well-being of our residents. I'm for economic growth and development, but the well-being of our neighborhoods is priority.
Very good. Okay. Danny?
The Plan Hamilton covers neighborhood revitalization, and so we should all do all we can do to redevelop our struggling neighborhoods, get rid of blight, reduce crime, and increase safety in those areas, including Second Ward, which, you know, is going to be voted in to become the Riverview neighborhood. We need to continue identifying ideas for business growth, establish things such as crosswalks, et cetera, in every aspect of our city, just as they're planning to do in Second Ward. So I believe the revitalization in our residential areas should receive a good percentage of the city's resources that are going towards Plan Hamilton. It's a must to refurbish the dilapidated properties and to focus on areas that are in dire need of the attention so all that, so all can enjoy.
Okay. Thank you. Eric?
Yeah, we agree on that, don't we? All right. No, I agree with that, actually, twenty thousand people, again, that we're looking that could possibly come through here and were part of Plan Hamilton's residents, housing, and neighborhoods. And yes, we do have to get our neighborhoods developed. We're going to have, you want to showcase Hamilton, we have to showcase the whole city, not just one part of it. It's going to take time, it's going to take money, it's going to take good planning. Then economic development, we need to put money into that, too. We need to get businesses in here, constantly keep them in here, cater to them. You show them that they're welcome, make the processes through all departments easy for them to come into Hamilton to have a business. You get all that together. Roads are always going to be worked on. I'm sorry, go down seventy-five, I can't ever remember a barrel not being on seventy-five. But that's going to be part of our budget all the time, okay? So I think if we do the residents, housing, and neighborhoods, part of the plan, and economic development, that's my two important items that I think we should do.
Okay. Carla?
I know it sounds like I have a one-track mind, and looking back at past forms I've done, it seems like every time I comment on something, my priority is the neighborhoods. And so that's why I believe that the priority that we should be putting the most attention on is to enhance the well-being of residents and neighborhoods by investing in police and fire capital, cleaning up blight property, and develop amenities. My dad used to tell us, there is nobody more important in this house than the people that live here, and we should keep things clean for ourselves. And I've said that many times about Hamilton. It can't just be coming and cleaning something up because we're having a parade or a festival or whatever. We have to live in this city. You never know when a new business is coming in for the first time that we don't have a chance to clean up for. So we have to make ourselves a priority.
Okay. Matt?
I believe in better neighborhoods. I believe in more firefighters and police officers on the street, and I think the way to get that's through economic development. I think that's where most of the money should go. You know, with more jobs comes more revenue, with more revenue comes more police officers and firefighters, we can clean up blighted properties, we'll have even better parks, shopping districts and events, and we'll revitalize our neighborhoods. In two thousand twelve, our payroll was eight hundred and twenty-three million dollars with twelve percent unemployment. Two thousand seventeen, one point one billion dollars revenue with four point eight percent unemployment. With that increase, we are able to increase public safety spending by four million dollars annually. We've balanced our budget every budget cycle and have a healthy reserve, and we've been able to invest heavily in our Parks Conservancy District, which helps out all seventeen neighborhoods.
Okay. Jason?
I too would support the neighborhoods, primarily because I live in it. I'm right in downtown, I'm a North Ender, and I live it every day. Our business works day in and day out to help develop and revitalize the neighborhoods. Currently have half a dozen projects in six different neighborhoods in the city that we are working on. I want to continue for that push, I want to continue to see the residents improve, the housing improve, again, because it will create a more attractive city for outsiders and a better place for people to work, retire, and live. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. We go to question number eight, and this is the last one that you guys are aware of. So here's number eight. If elected, if elected to Hamilton City Council, how will your leadership impact the city of Hamilton, its business, community, and its residents? Archie?
Thank you again. Well, if I'm elected to Hamilton City Council, I believe the city will be instantly impacted. Because currently, all of our council members live on the west side. So you will have another view from the east side of town immediately. A lot of people say all the time that, well, you can't look at east side and west side. It's very clear. If you don't shop at Kroger's on the east side, you shop on the west side. So it's easy to make that statement, but it's impactful when you're able to live it. And so it's very important that we consider that if we're going to have a true conversation about diversity and being true and honest. The other thing is, I think that we need to implement a voting district and have a ward system where there's four wards, making sure that all of our residents in the future of our city has a representative, and then two at large and one mayor.
Thank you. Okay. Susan?
Thank you. I'll be a full-time councilwoman dedicated to making a difference in our hometown. My vision for Hamilton is to look to the future while living in the present. We should never lose sight of the immediate needs of our residents and our city. However, we can't be shortsighted and failed to plan for the future. Hamilton's no longer the hub of major manufacturing. Technology's changing and will continue to change. Hamilton must look to the future with a vision, continue to bring companies such as Eighty Acres and innovative local small businesses such as Kayak. We must be fiscally responsible and continually seek funding to repair and improve infrastructure now and in the future. A North Hamilton Crossing will no doubt be necessary in the future. But we must consider immediate needs and alternatives and look toward 2040, not the immediate. And I guarantee you, I will still be here and working hard for this city in 2040. Thank you.
Okay. Danny Ivers?
Thank you. I believe my leadership, regardless of being elected, has already made a great impact on our community as a whole. Getting our citizens informed on issues, getting them civically engaged, getting them to attend community events, and getting them to visit new local businesses when they open was something that has been associated with me directly since before I even became a candidate. My impact on the city of Hamilton has already been made visible and will continue to do so when elected.
Okay. Eric?
Okay. I'm a, I've been financially responsible business owner for twenty-two years. Forgot to mention this earlier, but I'm currently a business coach and a consultant for numerous automotive services, automotive businesses in the tri-state area. They rely off my experience in budgeting, planning, policies, and procedures, and financial This is what makes them successful, and this is what made my business successful. I feel I bring that expertise in these fields to council to make sure, as a city, we succeed in our plan.
Thank you. Carla?
I am a passionate, proven leader, and I care deeply about what I do. I know the importance of communicating, sharing, engaging, and working with people in order to connect our community to council and administration. The Plan Hamilton is an invaluable tool that has gathered so much information, it's been well-thought-out, it has been vetted by citizens. What I would suggest that everyone on council does is they take one of the topics, and they see this thing through, and they make it be proactive. That's how we're going to get things to change, is for council to get out of the room and go to the neighborhoods and talk to people and engage them. And I think with Plan Hamilton, that's exactly what we can do.
Thank you. Matt?
My leadership will impact Hamilton because I want to keep improving on the community that I've been part of for the last forty-two years. I want to continue down the path of making it easier for small businesses to open with the help of SB four, or SBA 504 loans, micro grants, and design assistance. I want to advance with the comprehensive plans that we have already in place, such as the Storm Sewer Master Plan, the River Master Plan, and the Plan Hamilton. I want Hamilton to keep rolling out big projects like the South Hamilton Crossing and Mill Dole, and encourage others like Enflux, Spooky Nooks, and Eighty Acres to set up shop in Hamilton, while encouraging growth by companies like Hamilton Castor, Thies &amp; Krupp, Kayak, a company that has thirty percent of its workforce walking to the job every day in Lindenwald. I did not know that till a couple of weeks ago. I want to keep up with pushing for better neighborhoods. I want to push for more homeownership in Hamilton. Hamilton homeowner home construction is up one hundred and eighty-eight percent in the last five years, and we need to continue with that.
Okay. Jason?
When elected, I think I would bring that get-out-of-the-room mentality that Carla mentioned. I am the out-of-the-room candidate. I am blue collar through and through with my construction business. Again, with Operation Pumpkin, you'll see me out this weekend on the streets, I'm the guy who empties the trash cans. It's not anybody else, I do it myself. It's that same mentality and work ethic that I would bring to council. Thank you.
Okay. Casey?
I would like to say I'd make a drastic impact immediately, but I can't guarantee that. I will be one voice out of seven. What I can- that. I will be one voice out of seven. What I can guarantee is, I'll bring my experience, my knowledge, and my skills, my work ethic, to the position, making sure I do everything I possibly can to hear the voices of the residents and actually take care of their concerns, address them. Thank you.
Okay, now, as I mentioned, we have a couple of surprise questions, which the candidates are not aware of, and they have no prepared answers, but I'm confident they'll come right to them. Number one, what is your current involvement with the city of Hamilton? What committees do you serve on? What volunteer roles do you fill? How are you currently actively involved with your city? Susan, I believe it's your turn.
All right. Thank you very much. As I mentioned in the beginning, I retired from Miami University a year ago. And when I retired, my life had been, though, living in Hamilton, my life had been in Oxford. And I committed to coming back to my city and to volunteer to give back. And so since then, and a year ago, I ran for a state office. So I started immediately because I believe that's how we can make a difference. I campaigned now for two years. I have been involved in every inch of Butler County over the past two years, but more importantly, the past year, attending city council meetings, getting involved in committees, being very active with 17 Strong, getting to know the neighborhoods, and truly paying attention to my home in Hamilton. I've not served on boards because I've been campaigning for two years, and that would not be appropriate for me to serve on countywide or city boards. But I plan to do so while I'm a councilwoman and beyond. Thank you.
Very good. Thank you. Danny?
I graduated Hamilton High in 2017. I'm a current student at Miami University, Hamilton. I go to almost every event I can, as people, you know, like to mention here and there. But I attend every city council meeting, every single one. So I'm not involved on any committees and boards, you know, locally, but I get people involved, as I mentioned earlier, and do the best I can to be everywhere myself.
Okay, Eric?
Currently, I'm on the Board of Zoning Appeals for the city of Hamilton, and I did that basically when I supposedly retired in 2019, first there. I wanted to give back to the city what gave to me, and that was my first step. And then council was my second step on there. I'm also involved, my wife is actually the Butler County Director of Special Olympics. We do have a mentally handicapped son, and I'm back involved with that. I support her on this, and I coach. And we're in Butler County and Hamilton, so I coach some of the athletes in golf and, you know, golf, bowling. I forget all the ones I do now, but it's, you know, it's just something that's true to our hearts. So those are the ones that I've been on since supposedly retirement. Thank you.
Okay, Carla?
Well, I have four part-time jobs, so I don't have a whole lot of extra time right now. But in my extra time, well, actually, right now, I am on the tree lighting committee. I am on the advisory board at St. Peter's School. I'm, I am the Chair of the Ordnance Review Committee through the city. I am on the Butler County TID Board right now, and then just serving on council. I volunteer at River's Edge. Anytime somebody needs help with anything, my hand is up and I'm ready to help, so.
All right. Matt?
Currently serve on council. I serve on the Public Utilities Commission and the Government Affairs. And I really do believe in volunteer work. I do a lot of it with the help, not just me, with the help of my local 648 brothers. I've done work at Hamilton Living Waters Ministry, served City, Booker T. Washington, Open Door Food Pantry, The Historic Cabin, Huggs Garden, Veterans Memorial, VFW, Big Brothers, Big Sisters. And then we've worked with Pastor Shaq, who's sitting in the audience a couple of times. And I want to thank her for doing all she does for the community. But all the volunteer work I do, I couldn't do without the help of the International Brotherhood of Electrical Workers, Local 648, and I want to thank them.
Okay, Jason?
Stay fairly busy. We volunteered a number of times for the Hamilton Civic Theater. We've helped them build some sets for different plays they put on, along with the Fitton Center. I've worked with the Hamilton Historic Society, the City of Sculpture, Ice Fest, Historic Dayton Lane, Jeffersonville Alliance, Love Your Block, Miami Valley Ballet. We've set up and tore down the Nutcracker Performance for the last six years, the Hamilton Urban Gardens System, and then also our work with Operation Pumpkin. I feel I'm very well-connected with a lot of the organizations here in town, and would continue to do so even as a council member. Thank you.
Okay, Casey?
Currently, I'm not on any boards or doing any volunteer work at the moment. My work schedule keeps me pretty busy. I work approximately 50 hours a week, and then trying to take care of my family and spend a little bit of time with them seems a little difficult, especially with trying to campaign. I have done many years of volunteer work within the communities, actually about 18 years worth. And that's been in various degrees and various different organizations. Some of them here in Hamilton, a lot of them were, and some even as far down as St. Rita's School for the Deaf down in Cincinnati. I did a lot of volunteer work down there. I want to get more involved and have more free time, and if elected, my work schedule will finally get to free up a little bit because I'm switching over to a different shift so I can be more involved. Thank you.
Okay, Archie?
Thank you. Well, for the most part, since I've not been on council over the last four years, I've been working within my community, the Second Ward, and also working with the Second and Third Ward Community Council, and have been attending some of the meetings from CICO, which is Southeast Civic Association.
All right. Well, due to the time constraints, we're going to pass on surprise question number two. So we'll get to the, we'll wrap things up, okay? So let's start with the closing remarks, and everybody gets, again, 30 seconds for closing remarks. And Danny Ivers, you'll lead us off.
Okay. Just to reiterate how I started off, I'm running for city council to establish a new and fresh perspective because of my age. I'm proudly endorsed by Sheriff Richard K. Jones and State Representative Sarah Crowthers because they agree with my vision. To wrap up, I would like to thank all the candidates for all the hard work put into tonight's forum, and to everyone who took the time to come out and listen.
Okay, Eric?
Good deal. Again, I want to thank Journal News, Miami Hamilton, Hamilton Chamber of Commerce, and TV of Hamilton, of course, for putting this on. And I'd like to thank everybody that came out here tonight. Yes, I would, again, when I sold my business, I wanted to give back to Hamilton. I wanted to do this, and I have time. That's a good thing. I've got a lot of time to do that. And I just appreciate you looking at, listening to everything that we said tonight, and I would appreciate your vote in November. Thank you.
Carla?
In all my time serving on city council, every day I think about our journey, where we've have, what we've accomplished and what lies ahead. And I believe I've proven myself to be a council member that serves all of the citizens, the entire citizen, with the best interest of each citizen and business at heart in every decision and every vote. My name is Carla Fear, and I would appreciate your vote for Hamilton City Council.
Okay, Matt Bunsen?
I'm making the decision to rerun for council because I think I'm making decisions what are best for Hamilton and not just individual neighborhoods or individual people or businesses. I'm trying to do what's best for Hamilton. I'm running because I want to get back to a city that's given a lot to me over these last 42 years and given to my entire family. I'm a fourth-generation Hamiltonian, and I'm very proud of that. With that, I'd appreciate all your vote on November 5th. I want to thank everybody for coming tonight, and thank everybody for watching at home.
Okay, Jason?
I would like to start by thanking the chamber and everyone else who attended here, and also the Hamilton Firefighters, Local 20, who have endorsed me for my campaign this year. I think you all have seen, there's a lot of similar views up here. My personal belief is, it's time to vote for who's actually going to get the job done and implement these views. And I feel strongly that I'm that candidate, and I have the track record to prove it. Thank you.
Okay, Casey?
I want to thank everyone for attending. I want to thank the chamber and everyone that sponsored to set this up. I'm invested in this city 100%. I'm born, raised here, moved back here. This is home, always has been, always will be. I want to see the best for it, not just for my family, but for everyone else. So I'm going to continue that effort and continue working to do everything I can to make this city as best as it possibly can. Thank you.
Thank you. Archie?
All right. I want to thank you for this opportunity, for placing this event before our voters tonight. I'd like to thank our sponsors. I'd like to thank our moderator for taking a moment out of his busy schedule. But more than that, I want to ask you, the voters, those that are here and those that are going to see this video. My name is Archie Johnson. My label is I'm the People's Choice. Someone asks me, what makes you the People's Choice? I'm the People's Choice only if you vote for me.
All right.
Thank you all again for being here and for everyone who's taken the time to watch this. I believe that of all the elections, national, state, local, this is the most important. This is where your lives are impacted every day. I hope I've shown you through my brief one-minute answers that I do have the experience, the leadership, the passion and desire to serve my community. It's not about me, it's about you. And I care deeply about everyone that lives here and about the future of Hamilton. So thank you. Please encourage your family, friends, everyone, go out and vote on November 5th. Thank you.
Okay. You've heard from the candidates. I just want to say one thing. I'm very impressed with a few things tonight. Number one, you have eight candidates up here. They're here. They care, okay? They care. And that's why they're up here asking for your vote. And then, if you look at the crowd, it's pretty well-packed out here. And it's diverse, and again, I see the passion and the caring of a lot of people here tonight. So I'm also impressed with where the city of Hamilton has gone in recent years. And you guys have got a good thing going. Keep it going. Thank you.
Thank you all for joining us. Continue to do your research about your candidates, and most of all, vote. If you came out tonight and you don't vote, it's all for naught. So please get out and vote. Thank you.